In Louisiana, Governor Jeff Landry calls for a crime special session of the Louisiana Legislature. What could it change? We go into depth on the details. In Florida, a father fights off the attempted abduction of his child. And a fight breaks out at a Long Island basketball game. And Mike's got the details on that. These stories and more coming at you today. Valentine's Day.
Valentine, Woody's favorite holiday.
Not mine.
Wednesday, February fourteenth on Real Life Real Crime Daily, and I'm Jim Chapman.
And I'm Woody Overton.
And I'm Mike Agavino. Happy V-Day, boys.
V-Day.
Try, try not to make that so.
It may indeed be that for some people.
Happy V-Day for all you suckers that go out there and do this manmade holiday. Give you lady roses and shit all year long. You don't have to wait until this one day.
Be a true romantic like Woody. It's also the eighty ninth birthday of my father in law, Jerry Lawman up in Jackson, Mississippi.
Happy birthday, Mr. Jerry. So is he named Jerry, Mr. Jerry Ann after him?
Well, my wife will kill me for this, but her parents had gotten divorced.
Oh, there you go.
And dad is Jerry and momma's Ann. And they sort of hooked up while they were divorced.
Well, that happens, I guess.
Your wife is gonna get you.
Along came Jerry Ann.
There you go. Mike's Valentine's Day loving.
She's a child of love, man. She brought them back together. They've been back another fifty something years after they remarried, so.
Isn't that special?
Lots of good came from that. We gotta put, we gotta, we gotta put this Super Bowl stuff to bed.
Oh, yeah. So how many Jim is this school to skin?
No, man, we were, it was a three way tie. And then, so we needed, our game went to overtime.
Anthem guy crying. I saw the one guy and I was like, yes. And then I saw that skinny chick like.
We got Taylor Swift on the over. She was like nine times instead of five and a half, which was the big bet I won over the, over the, uh, over the weekend with some real money, not what we're doing. Um, but, uh, but there was a lot of other stuff that didn't happen. We don't know if there's a hundred and twenty thousand beers sold or not yet. They're still counting beers, but.
Yeah, but we all had the same bet on that, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's Jim wins because Jim picked the Chiefs.
Ran the frickin' table, dog.
Pick the frickin' Chiefs.
Won every pass this year.
She's killed me all year, man. They killed me again.
The forty Niners controlled the game, the most of the game. And they just didn't put enough points on the board to prevent him from being. Why the hell did they pick to take the ball in overtime? That was just ridiculous. I don't know where the hell that came from. And who the hell picked Usher to do the halftime show?
He did a great job.
That was awful.
I thought he did a great job. We should do a poll. We should do a poll on the Facebook page.
The dance, the dancing was great. The singing was terrible. It was awful.
I was pulling shit off the pit. Cooking for myself. This first thing, this first Super Bowl I ever watched totally by myself.
They, I guess they don't, they don't do an alternative thing.
Sometimes it's nicer that way.
Didn't they used to do an alternative thing for halftime? Like a puppy bowl or something?
Well, Beavis and Butthead, that always had a halftime special.
Yep.
But I don't think there's an alternative anymore. Cause I, I, I wanted out as soon as that thing is. If Alicia Keys has a great voice, if she sounds like shit, you know, something is really bad in what they've set up. And they should have been auto tuned. I, I don't, it just didn't sound.
I'm in depression, mate. Football's over for another year.
No, no, we got the merger of leagues. Come on. The Rock is behind this.
They do that every year and it's always bullshit.
The Rock doesn't back losers.
I'll be watching NASCAR.
The Rock doesn't back losers.
No one's gonna watch.
The Rock says he doesn't back losers.
It's so funny, cause you're gonna go from, I mean, this game will come back. I haven't seen the numbers yet, but it will be the most watched Super Bowl in history because of Taylor Swift.
Okay, let's get into true crime time for Valentine's Day.
One more thing. Superbowl, okay, just one more thing. Best ad.
I didn't watch them.
You don't watch?
I have, I was checking on the pit.
The one with Ben Affleck and.
The Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, I saw that on Google. I didn't go back and watch it yet.
It was pretty good.
Only, only because they had Jennifer the Block in it, but that's the only reason.
Yeah, that was good too.
I thought you would, I thought you would vote for that because they did have your girlfriend in it. It was really funny, but, uh, USA Today has this panel of sixty thousand people who vote on the ads every year. And they come out and that ad got second and they gave the Arnold, uh, uh, whatever insurance company Arnold was doing.
I saw part of that, I was State Farm.
Was that the one?
State Farm.
That was a good one.
It was okay, but.
I don't think it was better than the Dunkin' Donuts. And they had the one with the UFC. Dana White was in it and some other people. That was a pretty good one too. It was a Bud Light commercial.
I was, I was giving myself a beer.
Bud Light commercial?
Yeah, man, and they had a lot of them on that show.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't score, they didn't score well. The worst scoring, the worst scoring ad of the whole thing in this thing was the RFK Junior ad, which is hysterical. Cause he, he stole a nineteen sixty John F Kennedy ad and well, it was packed in and threw it in there. That was bad, but they also had, and, and then we'll move on, Woody. But this is important.
Prime time.
The most, uh, the, the, the top Super Bowl ad of all time.
Which?
The twenty thirteen Budweiser Clydesdale ad where the guy raises the, the Clydesdale from a Colt up. And then it, the, the dog becomes part of the regular Clydesdale chain. And the guy goes up to Chicago to see him and, you know, the, the dog, uh, the dog, the horse has the blinders on. But then the guy is going to his car and the dog comes running down the street. And the dog, I keep saying, the Clydesdale comes running down the street after him and they hug. Uh, you can't watch that ad and not cry.
Yeah.
I don't know. People either, people either go for, for that one.
Or, or the Bud Bowls with the.
Or Mean Joe Green, where Mean Joe Green throws the kid the shirt, the Coke ad.
All right, football season is over. Let's get into true crime time.
I know you asked me to do at least twenty minutes on Super Bowl ads and these guys aren't letting me.
Let's do it, let's do it. Love all y'all, let's roll.
All right, uh, look, changes, they are coming to the state of Louisiana. We've been telling you about this since Governor Jeff Landry was elected. And he has called for a special session focused completely on crime. Uh, on February eighth, he called the Louisiana Legislature to convene for that special session focused on tackling issues of crime that are plaguing the state and in his opinion, and many others, holding us back. Throughout this session, the legislature will create laws to strengthen the criminal justice system and repeal soft on crime policies that enable criminals to hurt the community. So we're gonna go through real quick, the items that are on this. Uh, it's actually, I find it very interesting, some of these that a lot of people have been wanting to see changed for a while. Uh, the first item one is to restrict parole eligibility. Uh, something in the state of Louisiana that a lot of people think, uh, has been too loose is the parole, uh, options and.
It's become too loose.
Yeah, it's become too loose. And so that is something they're gonna talk about and look at changing. Uh, item two is to restrict or repeal the earning rate of good time or demution of sentence for good behavior and earned compliance credits.
Y'all don't know, if y'all know that is, um, for every day you serve, you get a day off your sentence if you.
So it's like a one for one.
Yeah, if you don't misbehave.
And so they're looking to restrict or repeal that. Uh, to require unanimous vote of the parole board to grant parole and increase the powers of the board. How about that?
I, I agree with that, cause right now it's, it's a majority.
Uh, to require electronic access to criminal records and certain records from juvenile delinquency proceedings.
Hmm, I agree with that too, because the juveniles are so much more violent now. Most of them being tried as, as an adult. Uh, even the ones that are, let's say sixteen or whatever, and they're trying them as an adult. They've, they've been doing it since they were ten years old. They might have a murder on their thing and, and, but it's the, it's, the case is locked up. If they were juveniles.
Yeah, very good point.
I mean, it's, if there's anything, it's, it's a good prediction of what kind of shithead you're gonna be. It's what you did when you were really young.
I agree with that. Uh, to increase the penalties for the crimes of carjacking.
Uh, that's about time.
Yeah, and that's something that I, has been, uh, major uptick in the state of Louisiana.
It's not gonna deter. There's such thing as a true deterrent for crime, but you know what? That same asshole won't be back out carjacked. Let me tell you this real quick. I had a guy on cell block, uh, he was juvenile. He got juvenile life, which was up to twenty one at the time. When he was eighteen, they moved him from juvenile prison to, uh, DCI, where I was at. And he was from New Orleans and I asked him, I said, he's, he's about to get out on his twenty first birthday. And I was pretty cool with him, you know, as I was most of them. And I said, I said, we called him juvenile. I said, Jeev, what you gonna do when you get out? He said, I'm gonna do the same shit. And he was in for carjacking. And then I said, what you gonna do different? He said, I'm gonna kill him this time, uh, uh, cause dead people can't testify against me. And guess what? He went out two months and he carjacked two people and he shot them both and one of them lived. Now he's doing life in bloody Angola.
Wow. Uh, to lower the age of a person deemed to be a child for the purposes of dispositions and sentencing for the commission of delinquent acts.
Hmm, wait, say that again.
Interesting. To lower the age of a person deemed to be a child for the purposes of dispositions and sentencing for the commission of the delinquent.
I must speak on this too, because I don't think y'all are gonna catch it. Most people want, delinquent act is, is something only a juvenile can be prosecuted for, which is, uh, whether you call it playing hooky or not obeying your parents, whatever, or running away. You and I can't be arrested for running away. Yeah. Uh, but, and the thing right now, it's like twelve or thirteen and they're gonna drop it down. Uh, or they're gonna try to drop it down probably to like nine or ten or something like that.
Yeah, so basically you'll be able to be prosecuted as an adult at a younger age.
No, no, uh, right? Um, no, you'll be able to be prosecuted as a juvenile delinquent before whatever age it is now, they can't do shit to them.
Oh, I see, well, okay.
And then now it's just like a little hug a thug, send it home and, and, and send them to the little psychiatrist and get a pat on the back or whatever the fuck till he turns twelve and kills somebody, right?
Well, there's a, there's a lot more of them. I'm not gonna cover every single one of them, but I will mention one more. And, and this is the one probably making some of the biggest news out of this special session. And they are, uh, Governor Jeff Landry is proposing constitutional carry where you do not have to have a permit to conceal a weapon.
Wow, well, you know what? Yeah, it's concealed, concealed. So, so we have, and most people don't realize this, we have an open carry law.
Yeah, but you can't conceal it.
Can't conceal it. But I promise you this, you walk around with a pistol on and they don't see a badge, cops are gonna get you. That would, that gets you meaning like, not that you're bad, but you're gonna get fucking harassed all day long. You can't, you can't go into Walmart and shit like that. Yeah, I'm down with concealed carry. They make it, make it a fair fight.
Yeah, that's right. So that's just some of the, there's actually, uh, twenty four of these different items that they wanna cover at this session.
And it's awesome and they're gonna do that. And that, this is where politics are gonna come into play, because Jeff Landry, the governor's gotta get X amount over on his side. Now, I think he's got a fair shot and it almost makes me wanna come out of retirement and go back in law enforcement, but we shall see.
Now, can they do anything about, uh, the federal government consent decree? Again, is it the only New Orleans that has a consent decree in effect right now?
Comes in, comes in different jurisdictions after those complaints like the, I don't know if they did it in Minneapolis, whatever. But what happened is some major incident will happen and then the feds come in and be like, hmm, your apartment's hooked up. You got too much of this or too much of that. Now, we're gonna put you under, the federal judges is the one that, that did it. We're putting you under this decree. You have to meet these mandates by such and such year or whatever. You lose funding or the feds take it over. So that's, that's different everywhere.
Right, but, but New Orleans is hamstrung by that thing and they'll, but they'll never get, they'll never get around it.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because the new governor, i- if he comes in and he's worked with, we actually had the DA in here uh, for New Orleans and they discussed this a little bit. If, if he can turn that department around by offering them certain things, like he's putting a, uh, state police headquarters right there in the middle, a troop right there in the middle of the French Quarter. Uh, the federal government is gonna look at that and they, they'll do away with that decree. I think a lot of that was you had a Democratic governor, uh, uh, at that time who was not, who was not giving New Orleans anything they needed.
Support, yeah. But I said, I mean, obviously you got people retiring and, and nobody wants to go where your hands are tied as a cop and all that. But it's, it's like, let me take you back to the prisons. The, um, in Louisiana prisons, when, when I was there, not in prison, when I was working there. Uh, we, we were under federal, the feds came in and like, mm-mm, this is bullshit. And you get a certain list of things that you gotta fix to get out from underneath that. And believe me, they want from out, from underneath it, so they can be in control of their own destiny.
Well, I think it's a really key time for the state. I was down in the, uh, in the quarter on Friday with a bunch of, you know, locals who have done, you know, fifty Mardi Gras. And they said, look, cause I'd never seen it like that in the, in the three years I've been here. They said it's back. And, you know, everybody's looking at the Super Bowl a year from now. And if, if they can deliver a great Super Bowl following a great Mardi Gras at Des Moines, then, then, you know, the tourism spigot opens back up and the convention business comes back in and a lot changes economically.
Something might be happening, cause I, I didn't watch your local news, but I didn't hear about any mass shootings so far as we, but it didn't over till.
I, I looked to see if they had a bunch of tomfoolery out there and I didn't see a whole lot.
A bunch of Tulane students pulled over with like four police cars right on Broadway this morning coming over. But, uh, so there's a little bit of trouble out there.
Yeah, well, people getting arrested now.
Hey ladies, are you feeling overwhelmed by hormonal changes? Well, you're definitely not alone. There are more than one thousand hormone disruptors living in our environment right now. It's sending your food, your water, the air you breathe, the clothes you wear, your skincare products. They all mess with your hormones. Then there's the natural hormone changes. Your body goes through it, premenopause, menopause. And while it's a natural process, it doesn't mean you have to suffer through it. The good news is you don't have to suffer through it anymore, because now you have Hormone Harmony. A formula made only with herbal ingredients that are shown to reduce hormonal symptoms in women of all ages. Hormone Harmony is not just a hormone support and supplement, it's become a phenomenon. Women can't stop talking about it on social media. A bottle of Hormone Harmony is sold every twenty four seconds. And the biggest benefit? Well, my wife says it makes her feel like her own self again. And that's what women mention over and over in the reviews. And there are over thirty thousand reviews for Hormone Harmony. And for a limited time, you can get fifteen percent off your entire first order at happymammoth.com. Just use code R L R C at checkout. That's happymammoth.com and use code R L R C for fifteen percent off today. That's H A P P Y M A M M O T H dot com and use code R L R C. Hey y'all, let me tell you about Gobble. All Gobble meal kits are pre-prepped. That means less work for you and less waste in your kitchen. Their meal kits include everything you need, so you can save time at the store or just skip that trip entirely. I got the box in and I had three different meals. I had Kung Pao Chicken, Crispy Fish Tacos and a Beef Boonginon, however you say it. But let me tell you about the classic Beef Boonginon. Look, it came with beef pot roast and a beef broth concentrate, red wine demi glace, cremini mushrooms, sea of pelone onions, mashed potatoes, baby carrots and rosemary thyme butter. It was so easy to make, literally like fifteen minutes it took sending. And let me tell you something, and all the dishes were fire, but this thing was like a taste explosion in my mouth. It's just unreal. We've got to spend more time together and more time doing the things we love, because everything came in this one single box right to my door. So see what a difference Gobble will make for your household. Right now, they're offering my listeners a fantastic limited time deal. You get a hundred and twenty dollars off across four boxes plus free shipping and free cookies. And let me tell you, those cookies, I ate one that was sin baked and it was delicious. Go to gobble.com slash real life. That's G O B B L E dot com forward slash real life for a hundred and twenty dollars off your first four boxes. This offer is not available on the home site, so don't miss out. This is genius. It's taste explosions in your mouth like you've never had. All right, let me take you to Florida, where a man was arrested after he attempted to snatch a four year old boy from inside a CVS pharmacy in Miami Beach on Thursday. You ever been to Miami?
I have not. I used to go down there a lot for work and spend like a lot of time.
South Beach?
And independent consultant, I actually stayed all over Miami, but you know what? Pretty cool place. Um, no, I, I didn't ever go cruise all those bars and shit, but I went to some fancy restaurants and stuff.
No, I love Key Biscayne, South Beach. I mean, there's great people watching, speaking to us, Jim.
Yep, and so fortunately the boy's quick thinking father came to the rescue and dragged the would be kidnapper away. The frightening incident, which was captured on CCTV, took place around eleven fifty five AM when the boy and his parents were leaving the CVS pharmacy in the city's North Beach area. The raised suspect identified as twenty six year old Nicholas Sterneman can be seen walking into the store before he suddenly turns around and bends down to grab the boy by the neck. Right, oh, somebody gonna catch an ass whipping. The footage shows Sterneman lifting the child off the ground and turning to face the store's door to leave. When the father, yay, tackles the suspect and pulls Sterneman away from his son. The boy can be seen falling to the ground while his desperate mother races to her child's defense. I bet some mama bears about to come out. The mother scoops up the boy and races him safely inside the store. As she does so, the boy's father wrestles with Sterneman for several seconds and even rips off Sterneman's jacket. A witness and the father then chased Sterneman down Collins Avenue and police officers, uh, joined in the pursuit also. And they got his ass. And then he is in prison. Miami's Channel Ten report Sterneman refused to explain to the police why he tried to deduct the kid. Imagine that, right? So good for the dad, cause you know what he's gonna do, right? There's definitely rape, rape and, and murder that kid coming. You don't grab a kid by the neck.
Talk about how desperate and ballsy, right? The parents are there in a fucking CVS.
You know, they, uh, motherfucker barely be glad it wasn't Mike.
You ain't lying.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't have to chase him down. The bullets would have done it for me, so.
Yeah, that's, that is, uh, that's some ballsy shit. He'd be dead, dead as hell or whatever Mike says.
Killed him like fried chicken.
Killed him good in the C-Bay.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, good for them for standing up.
Let's go back to my home, Long Island, New York. I love high school basketball games. You guys love high school basketball games? You ever do?
I haven't been to one since. I know your son was on championship team last year, right?
The last two years, uh, but you know, the traditions, the rivalries, the competition, the school spirit, all of it on display. High school basketball is great. Some say the enthusiasm just isn't what it used to be in high school sports, but not on my native Long Island, where the rivalries are as hotly contested as ever and the battles in the stands can be as physical as those on the court. An enthusiastic mother and daughter pair were exercising their First Amendment rights loudly during a game Thursday night between Oyster Bay High School and Locust Valley High. The pair from Oyster Bay were a bit too loud and aggressive for one of the Locust Valley parents, and that's when things went bad. The Oyster Bay pair were Kimberly and Gianna Gotti, the wife and daughter of John Gotti Junior, the namesake son of the notorious and alleged former head of the Gambino crime family, John Gotti.
Alleged.
Kimberly Gotti, fifty five, and her daughter Gianna, who's only twenty five, are now facing assault charges stemming from a fistfight with a woman at this game on Long Island after the woman asked them to stop cursing at players from the bleachers. She should have said, please. John and Kimberly Gotti's son, Joseph, was on the court playing for Oyster Bay High against Locust Valley. The woman said Kimberly and Gianna punched her and pulled off her hat and wig, quote, which were held on by three clips and Velcro. The woman said she, quote, felt as if my scalp was going to be ripped off and described how additional people joined in and knocked her to the ground. The Gottys, who were each charged Friday morning with third degree assault, disputed the woman's account. John Gotti Junior told reporters on Thursday, the woman assaulted his wife first. That's the only reason why we're here. She threw a punch and hit my wife in the head. Kimberly and Gianna Gotti are both scheduled to appear in Nassau District Court again on March sixth. Some unfairly speculated that, quote, this is the kind of thing that could leave someone wearing a pair of cement Jordans. Just another gratuitous racial joke at the expense of my people. But allegedly the Gotti ladies had shouted some rude words to the woman's teen son during the game. Allegedly, the woman then began shouting insults at young Joseph Gotti, who was playing for Oyster Bay. Back home, we call that a career limiting maneuver or a CLM. Both Kimberly, fifty five, and Gianna, twenty three, then allegedly lunged at the woman, pummeled her, pulling her hair. And at one point allegedly called the other team's players, quote, [bleep]. Sources said. I doubt the Gottys are actually capable of that kind of language. The victim suffered substantial pain to her scalp and bruises to both sides of her face, according to Nassau County Police. The judge in the case charged the mother, daughter crew with third degree assault. The judge also issued an order of protection meant to keep the alleged infamous mob family members away from the victim in this case, who has not been named, will never be named, and has already changed her name. The Gotti's attorney, Gerald Michael Matone blamed the blow up on the other parent, telling the New York Post that the woman threw the first punch and had been badgering Kimberly's youngest son. He also denied his client's use of the homophobic slur. They were making fun as he was playing and then there was a little bit of a verbal thing, but that's it. And this victim actually punched Mrs. Gotti. She threw the first punch. So the Gottys don't press charges. The next court date is March sixth. Current odds are at two hundred and fifty to one against the alleged victim showing up for that court date.
Looks like the Gotti bloodline don't play, huh?
Well, that, uh, the daughter Gianna is actually a professional basketball player in Portugal.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that, wow.
She's, uh, she's good and she's, uh, uh, by, by all counts, I, I don't think these, this family is involved in any of that other stuff that was alleged.
Cause nobody can defend her, you know what? She's Teflon.
She might have, she might have inherited a little bit of a Teflon. I don't know how good the youngest one is.
All right, well, let's get.
I bet they're in the garbage business.
Sanitation.
Yeah, sorry, sanitation.
Sanitation engineer.
Let's go back to Louisiana and, uh.
Where in Louisiana, Jim?
Talked about, we're going into Homer.
Oh, down south where the Indians, Homer Indian tribe.
Indian tribes are there and, and someone else very famous is there. And look, before we get into this story, I'm gonna say this. I know this guy personally, this guy's done my podcast, uh, and he is about one of the most humble individuals you'll ever meet. So I'm gonna read you a little bit of, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read you the article that came out on him and then I'm gonna read you his response and, uh, and we'll comment on it. But, uh, the Cajun ninja, Graham Marshall of the crew of Mardi Gras leapt off his float and got into an argument with a member of the crowd. A parade goer shouted, shouted expletives and told Jason Deruine, a popular internet personality known for videos of cooking on social media under the name Cajun Ninja, that he couldn't cook. When asked about it, uh, Duplana said, because I said he wasn't a real cook, that's why he jumped off the float. The internet personality jumped off the boat, the float and another crowd member who would not give his name held the two men apart. Members of the Terrebonne Parish Sheriff's Office got involved and the internet star got back on the float. The parade was at a stop while the royalty was toasting. And a short time later, Deruine's wife, Misty, gave Duplana the middle finger. Deputies told her to stop and she responded, what? They can do it to us and we can't? The deputy again told her to stop and she said, that's okay. I'll tell Joe Watts. Joe Watts is the Terrebonne Parish District Attorney. Eddie Reyes was standing near Duplana's when Deruine leapt from the float. He said he wasn't a fan of Deruine's cooking, but that Duplana's heckling was excessive. He kept yelling, fuck you, fuck you, Reyes said. The old man kept talking shit and that's not right. Questioned about the incident, Terrebonne Parish Sheriff Tim Sorgne, who was riding about two blocks ahead of the Graham Marshall's float, said he would collect the reports from his deputies and decide what actions to take. So, uh, the ninja responded to that. And his response, which he put on Facebook was, I should have never jumped off the float. I take full responsibility for my actions. It was a lapse in judgment on my part. Contrary to popular belief, I didn't jump off because someone said he isn't a real cook. I've been told things like this since I started making videos. Most of you who truly know me know I do not consider myself some gift to Cajun cooking. I'm just another guy cooking in Louisiana who happens to film the process. There are many, many people who can do it better than me. I'm completely okay with this. I also did not jump for what was actually initially said to me, which was fuck you fake Cajun ass. Then followed by several F U's, middle fingers, and you can't fucking cook. This was completely unprovoked, but then again, that didn't bother me. I actually smirked at the level someone would go to make a guy, to make a guy mad over cooking videos. It started to escalate when the person would not stop. Then they continued to my wife's side of the float, pointing at my wife and saying, and fuck you too bitch.
Yeah, it got off then too.
A few more F-U fucking bitch, and it was then that I had the lapse in judgment. It was irresponsible for me to do such a thing. There was never a moment in time where it's a good idea to jump off the float. So despite what was said to my wife and I, there's no excuse, and I should have shown better restraint. My apologies go out to the people who witnessed this, the law enforcement who had to get involved, and to tell all of you, I definitely learned something. Uh, and I will be better at handling situations like this moving forward. Uh, so, my question is, and you kind of just answered it, you know, was he justified in doing that?
Yep, it'd be, you know, when they take it to your family members, like, I've been to Graham Marshall parades before just like this. I don't give a shit what they say to me, right? Um, and you're always gonna have the haters out there, you know? You put their family members in jail or whatever, you know, the Cajun ninja did to these people. But they're probably trying to film it and do whatever. When you take it to your family members, you can go fuck yourself. I'm getting off the float, see?
That's right.
Um, and whoever says he can't cook has never made his gumbo.
Amen to that.
Was he the king of that?
Yes, he was. Look, Cajun Ninja, what a lot of people don't know about that guy, in addition to being a great cook, in my opinion, uh, and a lot of other peoples, he's got two million Facebook followers, literally. Um, in addition to being all of that, he's a third-degree black belt in taekwondo.
Right.
And also, he is, I think he's a brown belt, I could be wrong on that, in jujitsu. Uh, he probably would have killed that guy in two seconds.
I wonder if people thought it was a setup? Do you think people thought, uh, you know, it was, because that had to be, I gotta go back and watch it, but that had to look like something that was, I mean, when do you see the king of a parade jump off?
Yeah.
To get, I mean.
When I, when I was, became, or in Graham Marshall's same thing, like he was in this one. The, um, I had my, you know, I was in, in the very first vehicle, but the float behind me was my family and all my friends, right? And if someone had done that to them, then I probably would have lost my Jesus too. And done whatever.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a setup when you got a million people there watching. But Cajun Ninja doesn't need any more publicity than the fact that, I'm gonna tell you this. Go look up his how-to-cook original roux. That's it. The gumbo is part of it, but his, his how-to-do-theoriginal roux, I've taught that.
We'll link it.
Everywhere from all the way up to Wisconsin. They make a gumbo when it gets cold up there, but they stir in that roux for about two hours.
So he's pretty modest about.
Oh, he is, and in person, if you met him, you would know, there's no way he would have done that unprovoked, and it would have had to been a lot of provocation.
Yeah.
Well, it probably worked out well for him, because he probably got millions of, uh, of views off of it.
Well, y'all.
We're gonna get Mike to jump off a float, don't you?
I will. Backwards.
Hey, we're gonna take it, take it serious, serious, serious down tonight. It might be, this is real life, real crime. We do a lot of joking, we do a lot of, you know, segments and all this stuff. And this story is probably one of the most disturbing things you're ever gonna hear on this show. And I don't know that we've ever done one more disturbing. So, a mother has been charged with a felony after she put her one-month-old baby down for a nap in an oven.
Oh my god.
The baby later died. The woman identified as Kansas City, Missouri resident Maria Thomas, put her newborn baby daughter in an oven earlier this week. That's what the Jackson County prosecutor said. Police found the child on Friday after responding to a nine-one-one call that reported a non-breathing infant. Upon the arrival, officers discovered the baby with apparent burns. Authorities were told that Thomas was putting the child down for a nap and accidentally placed the child in the oven instead of the crib. That's what the prosecutor said. Kansas City Fire Department, which also responded to the scene of the alleged, of the crime, not alleged, fuck her, declared the baby dead at the scene. The criminal complaint states the one-month-old was found in the living room lying in a car seat just inside the front door, and had to sustain apparent thermal injuries on various parts of her body. She was clothed in a bodysuit over a diaper. The clothing appeared to have melted onto the diaper, and it was very dirty, possibly burned on the backside. A baby blanket with significant burn marks was also found on the property and collected by police. Police reported that the baby's grandfather returned home and could smell smoke in the home. He looked for the source of smoke, and that's when he found the baby dead in her crib, and the grandfather called nine-one-one. He questioned his daughter as to what to happen, and Thomas then said she accidentally put her in the oven. Thomas now faces, fuck her. She's, you know, she, she's getting ten years to, to life.
Yeah. Ten years of life, she needs to.
Yeah, she needs, they need to put her ass in the oven.
Yeah.
There you go.
No talk about her being on some kind of crazy drugs or any.
Make a fuck if she was, she put her baby in the oven, and, and no excuse for that.
Mm-mm.
I don't care what you smoked or.
Well, and also, if somehow you were crazy enough to accidentally put your child in the oven.
You wouldn't hide it later.
Well, she must have turned the oven on, she still turned the oven on, because the child wouldn't have been burned if they were in an oven that wasn't turned on, I mean.
Yep.
Where was that? That was Kansas City?
Yep, real life, real crime, y'all, and, uh, justice needs to be served.
Okay, let's, um, let's go to, I don't know if you guys caught any of this, but, uh, Jeffrey Epstein's brother, Mark Epstein, has gotten very involved in what is going on, continues to go on, involving exactly how Jeffrey Epstein died. So, you know, one of the most prominent present-day conspiracy theories involves the death of billionaire pedophile Jeffrey Epstein. Epstein was found dead on August tenth, twenty nineteen, in his prison cell at the Metropolitan Correctional Center in New York. He'd been arrested in July of twenty nineteen on federal sex trafficking and conspiracy charges. New York City's, uh, chief medical examiner Barbara Sampson conducted a four-hour autopsy on Jeffrey's body on August eleventh. The initial autopsy did not conclusively identify a cause of death. The official language would later be altered to read apparent suicide as cause of death. Epstein's brother, Mark, became skeptical of the ME's ruling almost immediately, and he is now leading an effort to conclusively determine his brother's cause of death. Mark Epstein appeared with Megyn Kelly on her Sirius XM show last week and summarized his suspicions. He said that he and Jeffrey's attorney requested former New York City, uh, medical examiner Michael Baden, I think it's Baden, uh, be present at the autopsy, and that Baden said they could not call this a suicide because it looked too much like a homicide. Mark said he learned of his brother's passing from the media, and he initially was inclined to believe the speculation that his brother had died by suicide, but things started to change as he learned more about the circumstances surrounding Jeffrey's death and what the medical examiner was and was not able to determine. So then the questions became, if he didn't commit suicide and he was killed, well, who killed him and how was it done? And so a Justice Department Inspector General report released last summer, you guys probably remember this coming out in the summer, detailed the number of failures at that correctional center, including faulty cameras, understaffing, structural problems, falsified documents, and more. All this occurred right before and right after Jeffrey's death. However, even with those failures, the hundred-and-twenty-eight-page report concluded the disgraced financier hanged himself in his jail cell with an orange noose he fashioned from, quote, "a sheet or a shirt." The report concluded that there was no foul play involved. Mark Epstein provided Megyn Kelly with autopsy photos of his brother that have never been seen in public. Um, and he's using those photos to challenge some of this official narrative. Mark used the autopsy photos, uh, to, uh, challenge the suicide conclusion. One of the photo, photos displayed a significant red mark around the middle of Epstein's neck, while another depicted his legs, which Mark suggested showed clear signs of blood pooling. He contended that the condition of Epstein's legs contradicted the expected outcomes of a hanging death. Mark said that when Jeffrey was found unresponsive by the prison guards, he had been dead for at least two hours. Quote, "We know that from the autopsy results because of the mark that was left on the neck. For that mark to have been embedded in his neck that way and dry like that, he had to be dead for at least two hours. It could have been as much as six hours, but a minimum of two nonetheless. I have a hard time as a layperson understanding how a sheet made that mark," Megyn Kelly said. She also said, "It's almost like a garret was used or some sort of rope wire." We have that picture. Um, I don't know if you've.
I saw it.
You've seen it, Woody? Okay, because I'm really interested to get your opinion on this. The fact that his legs are clear, even if they had laid him down, the blood would not have drained up from his legs into his back unless he was hung upside down. This is according to Mark. The fact that his legs and buttocks are clear from lividity, it leads doubt to the fact that he was found the way they described. Mark is saying this is bullshit. There were eleven other prisoners on that tier in the cells that, and any one of them could have killed them. Mark noted that the doctors who performed the autopsy said the marking looked more like a, quote, "ligature strangulation," which typically occurs, quote, "when you go behind and pull something tight around someone's neck." If you read the Justice Department report, it describes the way Jeffrey was allegedly found hanging. I don't know if you guys have seen that, but it's really weird. They said that he was in a seated position with his legs extended out in front of him, and he was hanged by the thing around his neck from the top bunk with his buttocks about an inch above, uh, inch or an inch and a half above the ground. So like in a seating-like position, except not seating, with his legs out in front. You ever heard of, you have a.
I've seen it, I've seen it.
Okay, so, um, uh, you have any thoughts yet? What do you, want me to keep going?
You can keep going, I got a lot of thoughts, I.
Okay, um, "This is not in line with the markings in the photo," Mark said. "If you look at the picture, the ligature mark is more in the middle of his neck and, uh, uh, and goes straight back. In a hanging, it goes really high up on the front of your neck because you sink down into the noose or whatever, uh, was used." This is why Mark does not believe Jeffrey died from hanging the way that they say. And when you combine this visual evidence with the various departmental failures documented in the DOJ report, there's lots of reasons to question the suicide conclusion. We learned that video surveillance of the small cell block where Epstein was housed was broken. So there is no video view of the area during the time of his death. We do know that the cameras on the other side of that cell block were operable, so we have evidence of who entered and when they entered. From those cameras, we learn about two guards who did not conduct the rounds they were supposed to conduct that night. We also learned of two unidentified guards in the area that night. Why can't they identify those guards? Mark's theory is that his brother's cell and at least one other cell in that block could have been left open, uh, that night, and someone could have come for Epstein and murdered him. Mark is not saying that is, that that's conclusively what happened, but he's trying to raise awareness about the case, believing the answers are out there somewhere, so.
Right. Where to begin? Um, I personally, and this is my personal opinion, not based off all that. The how and the fuck do you let your most high-profile inmate hang himself? Well, you know what? You wanna hang yourself, you're gonna hang yourself. The, I, me personally, I think everything is suspect, blah, 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 but I'm not a conspiracy guy. Now, as far as, uh, lifting your buttocks off the floor and hanging yourself, I've seen it. It doesn't take much to hang yourself. I've had people hang themselves from everything, from a little bitty kite string that ties up sheet bundles to, to shirts and everything else. Um, the lividity, that's, um, oftentimes misused term. Let's say it was two hours or six hours, your body goes through like three different stages, if I'm not incorrect on that, right? And so the, it gets hard, then in, in the blood pools, and, but you could turn them over for whatever reason, and then the blood will shift and, and they will come in and work the crime scene and whatever. That, that's bullshit. I mean, that could be one way or the other. The camera being out, typical, not knowing who the other guards were. I mean, as a conspiracy theory, but the main thing is this. What people would need to understand is, that's an eleven-person cell block. That cell block is for the people who need protecting or, or locked down on CCR for whatever reason. And the, people not making rounds, hell, you're supposed to make rounds every fifteen minutes. Swim didn't do it back in his day. But I made sure, but I did make the rounds, the doors were locked. You're gonna walk that tier, you can pull every door knob or every door handle to make sure they're locked. And no, you can't just, it's like getting out of a pair of handcuffs, it's total bullshit. It's just, you just don't, it doesn't happen. Um, if the cell doors were left unlocked from the control center, there's a record in it every time they're open and unopened. I get it, it's a conspiracy theory. I personally, for whatever reason, I mean, just, I don't understand how you let your most high-profile inmate that you ever had hang himself. But as far as factual enough to charge someone, other than what they've already said, that, you know, but that could have been any prison and anybody that non-famous hung themselves, that they actually went in and did this big investigation, they're gonna find all this shit, like people not making rounds. This didn't work, and or whatever, I don't know. So.
So your gut is?
My gut would be, the, without looking at evidence, just listening to and talking to some people who talk to over forty victims, uh, um, and all that. My, my gut would be, yeah, it's certainly suspicious. And, but, you know, bringing in, uh, Dr. Baden and, and giving a four-hour autopsy after it's already been done. And, I mean, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I don't see how that happens. But I also think Jeffrey Epstein's a little bitch, and he knew he was gonna get to do life or whatever. So I'm fifty-fifty. More likely he killed, he killed himself.
Jim, any thoughts?
I, I'm, I'm a little more towards he didn't kill himself, but, um, I don't have Woody's expertise on that.
I mean, we, we recognize there are a lot of powerful people he stood to cause some damage. So there are, there certainly are reasons for people to be suspicious. And, and when you, uh, when you add to it all the things that went wrong from an execution standpoint within.
Let me ask this, how come they hadn't killed that chick yet? The one who set all the fucking up.
Jelaine Maxwell?
Set all the fucking up and the rapes and all the people flying back and forth on airplanes and.
Oh, no.
Yep, exactly. All right.
Spark something uncommon this holiday with just the right gift from Uncommon Goods. The busy holiday season is here, and Uncommon Goods makes it less stressful with incredible hand-picked gifts for everyone on your list. All in one spot, gifts to spark joy, wonder, delight, and that's exactly what I want it feeling. Hey, y'all, I ordered a super cool piece. It's a candle with a sculpture of LSU Tiger Stadium on top of it. And each officially licensed, laser-cut wooden replica features up to four layers of detail, creating a bird's eye view of a specific football field, seating section, and more. And every label includes your stadium's name, the team's logo, and school location. And it has a coconut soy vegan wax infused with sandalwood smell that creates tailgates and touchdown scent profile reminiscent of game day. It's invigorating like fresh cut grass and nostalgic like smoke from a pre-game grill, and calming like the crisp autumn air of a new semester on campus. Y'all, I love it. I have it at the base of my TV and I'm ready to watch the Tigers play on Saturday night, right? Uncommon Goods. Look, when you shop at Uncommon Goods, you're supporting artists and small independent businesses. And many of their handcrafted products are made in small batches. So shop now before they sell out this holiday season. Uncommon Goods looks for products that are high-quality, unique, and often handmade or made in the US. They have the most meaningful, out-of-the-ordinary gifts anywhere. They even have gifts you can personalize. From holiday host and hostess gift to the coolest finds for kids, to hits for everyone, from the book lovers to die-hard sports fans. Uncommon Goods has something for everyone, not the same old selection you can just find anywhere. And with every purchase you make at Uncommon Goods, they give one dollar to a nonprofit partner of your choice. They've donated more than three million dollars to date. So to get fifteen percent off your next gift, go to uncommongoods.com/rlrc. That's uncommongoods.com/rlrc for fifteen percent off. Don't miss out on this limited time offer. Uncommon Goods, we're all out of the ordinary.
Good point.
Good, 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 good story.
All right. Oh, Mile High Crime for Wednesday, and we're leaving the United States, y'all, and we're.
Oh, Jim's getting on a plane.
We're going, we're going overseas. A man was charged in federal court last week after causing a ruckus for several hours on. on an international flight to Salt Lake City and even spitting on fellow passengers. Law enforcement at the Salt Lake City International Airport said they were alert, alerted to an incoming flight from Amsterdam. How about that? Anybody ever been to Amsterdam?
I've been to Amsterdam, I love Amsterdam.
Mike, you been there?
Sure.
Fun?
Beautiful.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't there, uh, to party, I was there on business, but yeah.
Got you. What do they call, what do they call a quarter pounder in Amsterdam?
Royale.
Every time I see Amsterdam, that's what I think of.
Think about that's where.
You Pulp Fiction folks, you know what I'm getting at. But anyway, he was, uh, en route to Salt Lake City that flight when a man's action caused a disturbance for several hours, concluding with him being restrained onboard the plane. A passenger told police the man identified as 19 year old Darnell Collins started causing a commotion just one hour into the 10 hour flight. He was loud and disruptive and was tapping on other passengers. Collins, who is a Netherlands citizen and resident of Arizona reportedly escalated his behavior and began following a female passenger around. The passenger kept asking the flight attendant for help and ultimately pushed him away after he kept touching her. Witnesses said Collins then grabbed a woman's arm as she exited the bathroom and he wouldn't let go until others intervened. Flight attendants then moved at least eight passengers to different seats so he wouldn't disturb him, but he turned around the seat and kept talking to the other passengers until it became aggressive. One of the flight attendants said they feared a physical altercation might happen, so he was moved to the very back of the plane and other passengers in that area were moved. Still, he kept touching people as they walked past and even touched passengers two rows ahead of them, ahead of him. According to police, Collins then spit on a passenger and that would have been it right there, bro. At least two people were hit with his spit. He also reportedly called one flight attendant, uh, a B word. Due to the continued disturbance, the flight crew restrained him with flexicuffs. These flexicuffs are getting popular in these stories. These are single use handcuffs that are similar to zip ties, but he still kept unbuckling his seatbelt and standing up. So, he's eventually restrained with multiple, multiple seatbelt extenders wrapped around his body for at least two hours of the flight.
Comfortable.
Oh, my gosh. Police said Collins' action prevented the flight crew from performing their usual duties during the flight because someone had to constantly watch over him. Collins was charged by the US Attorney's Office with assault as well as interference with the flight crew and is being held at the Salt Lake County Jail. Look, I'm, if I'm on a 10 hour flight, I don't have to deal with bullshit.
Right.
Sitting your seat.
You spit on me.
Oh, bro. Yeah, that's about as bad as it can get.
I heard Spirits offering a new, uh, level of service where they flexi cuff every passenger. It's only like $19 to go to New York on that.
Do that.
Ooh.
Kinky Crimes.
A Valentine's Day.
Day, right?
Pressure.
Don't worry.
It's gotta be a good one.
Fans, lifers, don't worry. Woody, I'm gonna say from kinky crimes on Valentine's Day. All right, so, let's go to Australia.
Down under.
Down under, literally. And also bloke, whose experience was with super Viagra ended him accidentally flashing a teenage fast food worker has been shown mercy by a judge. Judge Teresa Austin accepted David Bruce Richardson's eyewitness account of his Viagra overdose and found there had been no sexual intent. When the Darwin man accidentally exposed his private to a 16 year old girl working in a drive thru. Yeah, right. The young woman was said to be traumatized and reduced to tears. Oh, Lord. Mr. Richardson's ill fated Hungry Jack's run last September took place a day after he took a sexual enhancement drug called Pitbull Super.
Oh, yeah.
Prior, prior to, wait, wait, why did he take it? Cuz he was going to attend an orgy with friends at a local hotel.
There you go. While, no better reason.
Exactly. While Pitbull Super is advertised as natural formula, it in fact contains prescription only drug, that's in Viagra and Cialis, which are used to treat, everybody knows what the fuck this is for. As a result, the taking of the pill, Mr. Richardson's erection would not subside and became extremely painful. He was, he was with a number of young ladies and they were having relations and he says that his erection would not cease and it became extremely painful. Now, lawyer said Richardson started to panic and the side of his penis began to split because of the life of circulation. Richardson then drove home, grabbed a towel, but said he couldn't touch his penis cuz it felt like it was about to explode. But he pulled it, he had time, right? To pull in the Hungry Jack's and he purchased some food. There was a towel, he said, he didn't get out of the car. He was embarrassed, that's what the lawyer said, fucking liar. And said, a remorse, Mr. Richardson admitted he had made a mistake and honestly didn't think the Hungry Jack's workers would see him. "I wasn't trying to expose myself to the poor young girl," he said. "The pill was way too strong. I'm surprised this illegal, that's legal to sell that stuff. I was in a lot of pain. I wasn't trying to flash myself anymore. I just wanted to grab a feed and go home." Mr. Richardson said he had, he had had to take several days to rest after the Texas super Viagra war. Whatever.
Pitbull Super.
The, mm, the judge basically said that, um, the packet of Pitbull Super looked dangerous, but said Mr. Richardson should have gone to hospital instead of a drive thru. I agree. She handed Mr. Richardson a nine month good behavior bond after finding he had no sexual intent, whatever, fuck. I mean, come on.
Pitbull Super.
Pitbull Super.
I have heard that, that, uh, you know, you go to the truck stops and stuff and in the bathrooms, you put the money in, I guess you get a packet of whatever it is. I had heard that some, I always thought that stuff wasn't legit, but I've heard that.
I know.
Some of that's legit shit.
Fact that some of them's legit cuz they're friends, they, they order it off the internet. It's called like Golden Honey or some shit like that. But shit, in the back, it's got Arabic writing and you look, you look it up and it's, it's, it has honey in it, but the main ingredients is shit, same shit they put in the dick pills. So, it's not, so you look it up on the FDA websites and they're like, mm, it's illegal, but we're just not really enforcing it because we don't have the people enforcing.
Right.
Here's your kinky crimes for Valentine's, maybe you all, y'all get, maybe y'all all get some Pitbull.
That might be, Mike's getting, bringing one home tonight for Valentine's.
Cheaper than my Tadala fill, it sounds like, since it's, uh, since you can just buy it over the counter. Pitbull Super.
Pitbull.
I need the Brussels Griffon super though, I don't, I don't need that Pitbull.
Happy Valentine's, kinky crimes for Valentine's. Donald Kermost.
Well, I have a Valentine's special dumb criminals. It was Valentine's Day in the year 2010 and to say 38 year old Stacy Schock was not in a romantic mood would be an understatement.
All right.
Richard Schock was Stacy's fifth husband, who had gladly adopted her three kids when they married three years earlier. Richard was anxious to find out why his wife had invited him to meet her at Belton Bridge Park in Hall County, Georgia for a special Valentine's Day treat. It wasn't just Valentine's Day, it was also the couple's third wedding anniversary. So, Richard was especially excited. While Richard had romance on his mind, Stacy had something very, very different on hers. Namely, Richard's $500,000 life insurance policy. Stacy worked at administration at the DeKalb Spinal Clinic. Lenitra Ross was Stacy's friend at the clinic. Stacy shared with Lenitra that she had grown tired of husband number five and had been having an affair. She asked her coworker friend for some advice on getting rid of her husband. Lenitra said she knew just the guy for the job. His name was Reginald Coleman. Coleman was a personal trainer by day, but on weekends and evenings, he ran another business called Mr. Results. Mr. Results promised results for the fair asking price of $10,000. Add a little finder's fee for Lenitra and Valentine's Day was looking very profitable for Stacy Schock. Everything was set. Richard showed up for his evening of romance and instead of Stacy meeting him at the park in warm embrace, he was instead greeted by Reginald Coleman, AKA Mr. Results, and his handgun. Gunned down on his third anniversary by a small time hitman hired by a cheating wife. Stacy now waited for her $500,000 life insurance payout. The insurance company was a little bit skeptical of a man being gunned down in a remote park holding flowers and a Valentine's Day card, so they decided to do a little investigating before releasing those funds. And what do you know? Our fifth time wasn't the charm mastermind of the murder of her fifth husband and adopted father of her children, had communicated all of the particulars with her co-conspirators before, during and after the hit over her company email and on her phone. She never saw the $500,000. Lenitra Ross never admitted her role in the killing, but she was sentenced to life in prison. Reginald Coleman pleaded guilty and he was also sentenced to life in prison. And Stacy Schock was tried and found guilty and was sentenced to life in prison. She's presently shopping for husband number six online and listens exclusively to banjo music. Happy fucking Valentine's.
Happy BD. Right?
You believe that one?
Paper record fifth husband.
Should have called Guido.
I wonder if she knocked off, uh, some of those first four.
Wow. Woody, any final thoughts?
Uh, I got nothing. Restaurants, flout, florists, candy makers, card makers. Y'all enjoy your most profitable day of the year.
Champagne, a little champagne.
Champagne gives me a headache.
It's all about Woody. Mike might, uh, bring a little champagne home tonight along with some other goodies.
Not knocking that you boys gotta succumb to the man. I'm just playing, y'all. I, I'm sure there's a hopeless romantic in me somewhere.
Y'all put it in your calendars, the three of us are going up to Parish Forensics on March 21st.
Yes.
We're gonna do the show from up there.
Yes, got a, um, busy month. March 1st, coroner, LOPA speaking, March 13, 14th, Louisiana probation parole up in North Louisiana. And then on the 20, what is it, we're going to Parish Forensics?
21st.
I can't wait for that.
Then on the 27th, I'm speaking at the.
It's, oh, I saw that, congratulations, yeah.
Love East Parish Baton Rouge area, tickets online, check them out.
Yeah.
Well, we're each gonna have a scalpel in our hand and a cadaver in front of us to do some work on during that episode.
It ain't gonna bother me, but I can't wait to see you two boys.
Help me, Roy, help me. Roy's gonna give me some help.
Roy Kristen's the best, Parish Forensics, y'all, they rock. We are gonna be doing a show from there. And so, hopefully we can video to it, huh, Jim? And, and get Roy and Kristen's on video?
Sure.
Yeah, so, anyway, thank y'all and we love and appreciate each and every one of you. You rock, happy Valentine's Day.
Until next time, I'm Jim Chapman.
I'm Woody Everton.
And I'm Mike Agavino.
Your host of Real Life, Real Crime Daily. Peace.
Glad.